I want to call this meeting of the Architectural Review Committee to order. Oh, it says that right here, huh? May we have a roll call, please?
Committee Member Rivera?
Present.
Chair Bichard?
Present.
Committee Member Kiefer?
Present.
Vice Chair Haas?
Present.
Let the record show Committee Member King is absent.
Thank you. Do we have any changes to the agenda?
There are no changes.
Nice. Public comments. Do I still read it?
Yes, sir.
Okay. This is an opportunity for members of the public to comment on any items not appearing on the regular agenda. Because of restrictions contained in California law, the Architectural Review Committee may not discuss or act on any item not on the agenda, but may briefly respond to statements made or ask questions for clarification. The chair may also request a brief response from staff to questions raised during public comments, or may request a matter be agendized for a future meeting. Public comments will be limited to three minutes.
We have no one in the audience wishing to speak on anything.
Thank you. Okay, so I close public comments. Approval of the minutes. Approval of the Joint Planning Commission and Architectural Review Committee meeting minutes of October 22, 2024. Do we need a motion and a second first?
We have to open it for public comments to anyone who wants to speak on it, even though there's nobody, no members of the public in the audience, we still have to open.
Okay, so we open up public comments.
There's no one wishing to speak.
And then we close public comments.
And then we can do.
And now we approve the minutes of October 22, joint meeting.
Okay. Let the record show a motion was made by Committee Member Rivera, seconded by Committee Member Kiefer to approve the minutes, motion passes.
Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is the approval of the November 6, 2024 meeting minutes. Yes?
We have no one in the audience wishing to speak for public comments. You have to open that up.
On this item?
Mm-hmm, correct.
Thank you. Okay. Roll call?
Oh, no, so the, there's no one here wishing to speak, so we'll close public comments then and open it up for a motion?
Okay.
And I.
So we close public comments?
Yep.
Well, I'll get it eventually.
Because I think we're asking.
Well, I have to literally read it. Hey, where's my thing?
Okay, let the record show a motion was made by Committee Member Kiefer, seconded by Vice Chair Haas to approve the November 6 minutes, meeting pass, um, motion passes.
Thank you. New business, right?
Correct.
Okay, good. Just want to make sure. We are going to receive a presentation of current economic development activities and partnerships in Cathedral City, including initiatives in housing, workforce development, small business support, and industry collaboration. This report also outlines how these efforts align with the strategic directives set forth in the city's five-year strategic plan.
Hi, good evening, I am Eric Bestrom, the Economic Development Manager for Cathedral City, thank you for having me. I'm going to touch base a little bit, but you just went over, and hopefully you enjoy the presentation. So first, I wanted to introduce myself, some of you I've already interacted with, but I wanted to also introduce Victor Gomez, so I have Victor Gomez here, and him and I are overseeing economic development, so wanted to introduce him and maybe give him some, just a moment to introduce himself to you all.
Good evening Commissioners, my name is Victor Gomez, I am the Administrative Analyst split between the Economic Development Department and the City Manager's Office, and it's nice to meet you.
Thank you.
Great, so Victor is awesome, he's one of the most amazing coworkers I've had, and he's just been super supportive on really just helping push forward Cathedral City in a really positive way, so I wanted to introduce him to y'all. So first, a real kind of brief overview on what economic development is, and really how it plays a role in everything that we do. So kind of starting off on the, on the right-hand side, which probably being the, you know, one of the most important parts is the community, right? And the community includes so many parts, so many pieces, that you all have a vital part in really helping shape, so when we talk about how impactful it is to be on a commission and be a commissioner of different sorts, it's so important because it all plays a part in how we attract economic development into our community, together to bring forward successful businesses that end up thriving within our community, growing their families, and being part of the overall social fabric. So in economic development, we oversee so many different things, but I'm going to highlight some of the, I think, really important things to touch on, which are business attraction and retention, as well as expansion. As much as it is important to bring businesses here, it equally is important to ensure that they're able to sustain their business and expand as they continue to grow. And as they grow, well, they need workforce, they need people to come in and fill those jobs and fill those positions, and really, all of that plays a role, because those families have to eventually find homes here to live in. And as they live here, they look for different resources that they may need, such as stores, you know, they need to visit stores and get all of the necessities that you need as a family, so with that, we bring in, you know, different types of residential, commercial, and even industrial types of projects, which all play a role into our community, but with this, we can't do it, you know, just shooting from the hip, we really have to have a strategic plan, and this plan really encompasses goals, actions, and objectives. And all of this, we have to play within boundaries of legislation, so we have to always keep an eye on what's going on with legislation. So I really like this quote by Peter F. Drucker, and he says, "The ultimate resource in economic development is people." It is people, not capital or raw materials, that develop an economy. I think that's very important, as you all play a role in what you do, it is what we all do, we are here for the people. So who are the people? The workforce that we have here, it's compiled amongst a series of different factors. What we have is an estimated 51,000 individuals who live in our community, the median age being around 42, the household income around 65,000, and overall, our labor workforce is around 20,000, which is a phenomenal number, meaning we have a lot of people that work in our community. And with that, you know, come the wages, so I won't dive too much into everything, but at the end, if you do all have questions, I'm happy to answer. So as we look at how important workforce is to our community, it's equally important to look at the housing that we have, and what is the available housing that we have in our current market? As we look at what the future holds, there's going to be an increase in the cost of a home. Luckily, we're in a place where still homes are somewhat affordable in comparison to the rest of the area. In this, we have to take into account that not all individuals own their home, we also have people who rent their home and who really play that other part in our community, where they're looking at taking that next step and purchasing a home and continuing to grow their family here. So what does it look like? Overall, we have around 32, or sorry, 36% owner occupied, and around, or sorry, 36% renter occupied, and around 63% owner occupied, which is great, it's showing that more people here are able to purchase a home and live here, and we want to continue doing that. I also added a note here of what our neighboring cities are doing as well to contribute to the overall growth of our community with relation to affordable, or some people like to call it entry-level workforce housing. Wanted to just note that Lift to Rise has noted that there's around 6,600 units in the pipeline, meaning they're going through entitlements, they're going through these different various processes with planning and the other departments in the communities where they're developing, and there's about 1,600 units under construction, so there's a need for different levels of affordability types here in the Coachella Valley, so I wanted to note that. So what does employment look like in our community? Here in the graph on the, I'll start with the employment inflow, so the graphic shows that the proportion of workers employed by city businesses that either live in the city or commute in, so for example, of the total of 9,800 jobs provided by Cathedral City businesses, 1,995 of them or 20% actually live in Cathedral City. So as we see and drive around and see all of the businesses that help support our economy here, it's good to note that a lot of individuals are driving into our community to make up a big, that larger percent of individuals that play the vital part of workforce in our community. So on the right-hand side, it's showing where individuals are going out of our community, and even though the arrows are pointing right, I can tell you that from other graphs that we've seen, the majority of the people leaving Cathedral City or of our workforce are working in neighboring cities like Palm Springs and Rancho Mirage. So why is it so important to want to attract communities and, or, you know, people to live in our community and be part of it? Well, as they live in our community, they invest, so they come and they spend their money in the local grocery stores, they go out to eat at their favorite restaurants, and usually those restaurants are in their community that they live in. So we like to showcase and always the, what are the positive things that are happening in our community and all the hard work that's going on behind the scenes. And this was recently put out by the Coachella Valley Economic Partnership, and this is data from the Department of Justice. And here, it's great to note that property crime is the lowest, has the lowest crime rate in the Coachella Valley here in Cathedral City. I think that's something that we should all be very proud of, violent crime being the second lowest rate in the Coachella Valley, and total crime being the second lowest crime rate in the Coachella Valley. All amazing statistics that really attract people, individuals, families, and businesses to be part of our community. So as we continue to grow, we see more and more investments in the different infrastructure that comes in, and infrastructure comes in all shapes and sizes, one of them being the College of the Desert Roadrunner Motors building that they're building there, right behind the Lexus Auto Dealer. That's really going to help with our current workforce, and I couldn't stress more how important the automotive industry is to our social fabric here in our community, not only because of the amount of jobs that they provide, but the amount of sales tax that that brings to our city to help us continue to do what we do, such as support having that low crime rate, and doing all the things that we do to continue to entice businesses to come to our community. This campus is really going to help us retain local talent, which is something that's always been really hard to do. Individuals, students usually leave our community here and go to other places to get their education and then come back, whether that be trades or a four-year university. This is one step forward in the right direction to help us really make that shift of education into embracing it as part of our economy. And when we see, this is another statistic that Coachella Valley Economic Partnership provided, and it really kind of just gives you a highlight of how important it is to provide education to our students, because it helps them get a better wage, and that's just in general a positive thing for our community and all the neighboring communities. So we are seeing more and more interest in our city. Coachella Valley Volkswagen just took over an existing Volkswagen dealer, so they relocated from Indio, showing how important the automotive industry is, how vibrant it is here, and how supportive our city is of new business. So that's something where we continue to showcase these stories, because it's important to tell our story to other industries that might have interest in coming to our community. With this brings resilience, so as we continue to bring in more and more attention to the automotive world and have these resources such as workforce development, we're going to continue to strengthen up that market, to be resilient in anything that comes in the future. And obviously with all this, we follow the market trends, and we want to ensure that everyone is keeping up to be able to play on an even playing field as we see what other cities are doing, both in the valley and outside, with reference to certain industries. And with this, with the coming year, we're going to work towards shopping local and really emphasizing the importance of doing that. As we learn more and more about the importance of that dollar that revolves in a community and how impactful that is, we want to ensure that we do our part to promote the best that we can, which even includes purchasing your own vehicle here in Cathedral City. So all of this, what are the market trends telling us, and how are we working around these? So the commercial real estate, it's making different shifts, and we're all seeing the impact of online sales, and overall, how this is impacting retail vacancy as far as commercial real estate goes. So as we follow these trends, we want to ensure we work with all of our departments and collaboration so that we move forward in the positive direction. Meaning, if we have certain zoning that's in place that isn't necessarily working, how do we all work together to make the appropriate shifts and pivots so that we are resilient as the future comes forward? So in this, I wanted to note that, you know, these collaborations include all of you, and I think it's so vital that as we continue to move forward, we work together, here on the bottom, I noted one of the site visit tours that we did all together recently in October, we'd love to continue having those types of relationships with all of you, to ensure that as we put our fingerprint on different projects, you all are knowing how proud you should be of the positive impacts you're having on these communities, and how can we all work together to move forward, to be proactive instead of reactive with different projects? And one of those things that we've done is Victor and I recently went to the International Council of Shopping Centers, which is a very large conference, it was brought here back to Palm Springs this year, where we interact and meet with shopping center owners and different brands and companies that have interest in coming to the Coachella Valley. And we have to tell our story to entice them to come to our community, and how do we do that is we make these relationships, we build upon them, we follow up, we go out and have meetings with them so that these relationships are long-term, and as they move forward and having interest in the Coachella Valley as a whole, we kind of zoom them in into our community and really tell our story by telling the story about crime rate, telling all the story about the affordability levels of housing, and why their business can thrive in our community, and we can support their project. And so all of this is constant, constant relationship building, and with that, we've noted that one of the most important things is we have so many amazing things that are occurring and projects that have already happened. We're right now working, Victor's been working very diligently with the planning staff and community development and all of the other departments on a GIS project tracker. I believe all of you have recently received a list of different projects that are, if you haven't, probably just recently got the email, but all of those projects will be on this project tracker, where you're going to be able to see live time what's going on in our community and that impact. You can quickly show someone that's interested in our community or has questions about it, and they can see where everything's developing, all in their fingertips, which I think is so critical, and we learned the importance of that at ICSC, and why that's going to be an achievement that we all should be very proud of. So yesterday, with that, these businesses, that, these shopping centers that want to come to our community, well, they're going to get filled up with various types of businesses, and if you drive around our shopping centers, you're going to note that it's a lot of local businesses that fill up these shopping centers. And how important is it that we ensure that these small businesses have the education that they all deserve is important to us? So yesterday, we had our first small business educational workshop, where we brought nine different agencies, federal, state, and local, to all provide free resources for businesses. So yesterday, we had a variety of organizations, ranging from the U.S. Small Business Administration that talked about all of the free mentorship that they can get from businesses, other neighboring businesses, and mentors that have gone through it, created thriving industry businesses, and can now share their knowledge with our local businesses. And we saw a lot of interaction between all of the agencies that you see on this list, as well as the local small business community that came out. We even had businesses drive from Palm Springs, because they have interest in coming to our community, as well as other parts of the Coachella Valley. So it's important for us to continue to tell our story. All of the presentations that they provided yesterday are online now, and that's another thing that we're working on, is making sure that our website and our webpage for economic development is up to date. So you can go on our webpage, and you can watch the NBC and KESQ posted both of the stories, you can watch the stories, I'm more a visual learner, so you can kind of just watch the video. And then the presentations are amazing, because you all, as you know, different businesses can share this knowledge with them, it's at your fingertips now as well. And so all of this data is out there for any small business that's interested in coming to our community, and not only that, but we're happy to continue to build upon these relationships that we have with these organizations, to ensure that all of the businesses get the appropriate attention that they deserve. So I keep saying relationships, right, that's very important, I believe that's the most important thing of all of this, is we have so many organizations here in the Coachella Valley, and how do we work with all of them to ensure that we're using them in the best capacity possible? Well, all of that is done through relationship building, and we have the Coachella Valley Economic Partnership, they're helping get data and analytics to allow us to tell our story, like I showed you with the crime rates, I'm able to tell that story due to the fact that that organization took the time to work with the Department of Justice to obtain that information and create those graphics. Visit Greater Palm Springs is going all over the United States to help tell the story of the Coachella Valley, it's up to us as individual cities to attract those people to our city amongst the rest of the nine cities. And we have the California Desert Association of Realtors, they're really looking at what is our local market, so how do we work with them to ensure that we're up to date on what's going on with the housing market? The Cathedral City Auto Center Association, I couldn't stress more how important they are as economic partners to us and the overall growth of our community. The Riverside County Office of Economic Development, they're there to be a resource, and we've used them so much and will continue to do so all through relationship building, which helps us attract new businesses, as well as get the resources to the ones that are here already. And the Greater Coachella Valley Chamber of Commerce, they're the ones really helping us leverage these relationships, because they're out there, they know the community, and they're really integrated into the social fabric, so they're able to really tell our story, and you might, you might actually recognize some of those individuals in that photo. So it's really, it's really nice to know that people are out here really working to tell our story, and how do we get them the tools that they need? Yesterday was amazing to see Brandon Marley up here, talking to all the small businesses about the importance of them playing their part in networking with other businesses. At the very end, we did something kind of off the cuff, which was we allowed the small businesses that were here to come up to the podium and sort of pitch their business to all of the nonprofit organizations that were in the audience, and they got feedback right then and there about how those organizations could help them, and that's something that we're going to continue to do so in 2025. So why are you all so important? I've touched on it a little bit, but as we continue to work with developers and different interested parties and stakeholders in our community, it's important for all of us, both administrators and legislators and all of you, to work and have a unified vision on what the economic growth looks like for our community, because the more cohesive and consistent we are all with the way we approach development, the more they're interested in developing in our community. And with that, we can collaborate to streamline the success of our community, and that's really to make Cathedral City an attractive place to invest, because as we are all cohesive and working together, the business stakeholders are noticing, and they're watching these videos, and they're watching all of you, to ensure that their investment is safe. So as we all work together, it's going to continue to attract them to want to be here. And at the end of that, all of that together helps us shape the future of what Cathedral City can be. So the decisions we make today are going to help us shape the economic growth of tomorrow. And that concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Great presentation, crushed it. I just wanted to applaud you on hitting the ground running and being so proactive on everything, seems like you really have a good grasp on what to do and the right steps to take, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Question I have is regarding your partnership with California Desert Association of Realtors, are you reaching out for them, to them for specific market data?
Yeah, so that's a great question, so we actually attend their monthly meetings, and we recently presented economic development, and we're working towards continuing to build upon that relationship. I know one of the things I did was recently was ask about data, and the other thing that sort of hit us was, well, we have data that SEDAR may want, and that's one thing that we're going to work in 2025, and we're making goals and objectives of how to continue to build upon that relationship with SEDAR.
Okay. Awesome. Are you aware there's two associations in the desert?
That's the one that, what would be the second?
It's Palm Spring, it's Greater Palm Springs Region, or Greater Palm Springs Realtors Association of Realtors, so it's in Palm Springs off of Ramon, I'm a member there also, I used to be on the board there as well. So when it comes to NAR jurisdictions, actually, CDAR falls outside of Cathedral City, I've actually pushed at both organizations that I am allowed to interact on behalf of CDAR with Cathedral City as far as advocacy, when it comes to the city council and planning, so. So that's just information for you to know.
That's wonderful. Thank you.
The political, I forgot what that, GAD's Government Affairs Director, Jim Franklin, and then Randy.
We have.
Weimer, Randy Weimer. He was, he was very involved with government affairs over there. If you call their office, I mean, the data you're going to get is going to be the same. That's the bottom line. That's why I asked, what are you just getting market data? But when it comes to advocacy, if you want Realtors to participate as far as advocacy, we would have to reach out to Palm Springs. But they've told me, just ask for permission, and I don't do that. I just ask for forgiveness, so.
No, thank you. I'm sure we're already taking notes and we'll make sure to communicate with them.
That's just some informational background for you.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Their meetings are every Wednesday at 8:30, too.
Wednesdays.
At the senior center.
Perfect.
Just to give you an idea, if you want to stop by one time.
Definitely. We will make sure to make time to stop by.
They would welcome you guys.
Awesome, and we look forward to that.
And they supply bacon.
Love it.
That's a big deal. They make a big deal about their bacon.
I couldn't tell you how much I love bacon, so thank you.
It's a breakfast with the bacon, so.
It's great to hear.
Whatever. Bacon, eggs, fruit, coffee.
Sounds like a great time.
I wanted to add to our second comments made by committee member Haas. And I don't know that many people know this because faces have changed over the years and people have come and gone. I've been at this since, I think, 2006 with the ARC. And there was a tenure period on the Planning Commission where I did both committee and the commission, they overlapped. And I'm saying all this because all the people I've seen come and go, different mayors, different planning directors, I haven't seen this much proactive engagement in the city in a long time. So it's really appreciated.
Thank you for the feedback. Just wait till 2025. We're three months in, so I hope you guys are ready for the full engagement of Victor and I, because we're excited to bring you all what we have in mind.
Please, honestly, we desperately need it, bringing in the right businesses. We're really lacking in, I'm sorry to say it, but very quality businesses. Our neighbors to the left and right don't seem to have an issue, so I'm very impressed with all the work you're doing.
And sorry to interject, but I'd just like to point out that with Eric's directive, we actually went and had personally invited over 180 small businesses. So we went to each shopping center and invited them, so trying to have boots on the ground.
Cool. I love it.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yeah, we're happy to show you our step tracker on my iPhone. You can fact check that. We walked a lot, and we talked to a lot of people. And it was very, it was all positive, and we can see where they need a little bit of help. So, and we also can see how, you know, they might be just a little bit disengaged, but we're excited to build upon those relationships. And they're already calling us saying, hey, sorry, we couldn't make it, but we're going to make sure that those relationships build.
Regarding your walking advocacy, if you guys actually go to both of the real estate associations on a regular basis requesting engagement, that's something none of the cities do. It's always an invitation from the GAD or from the AE saying, hey, come do a presentation for our members. If you guys are there knocking on the door saying, hey, you know, we want to tell you about Cathedral City, that just in itself would be huge.
We're happy to do that. Yeah, with the bacon and everything, we're excited. We're going to go there and we're going to present, for sure.
Don't forget California Desert, too.
I won't, I won't. I'll go to all of them. I'm definitely, we're definitely, I know Victor and I are, we do what we say, so.
Keep it up.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Do I need to say what's in red? Do I need to say what's in red?
You can, we can just move on to the next one.
Okay. Discussion on future agenda items, are there any future agenda items to discuss?
Nothing this evening.
Thank you. Do we have anything from staff?
I would just echo the comments and everything that has been said about economic development. This is an exciting chapter in the city's history, and we have worked to integrate economic development into our broader department, the Community and Economic Development Department. And as we look ahead to what's coming, where we're going with the zoning code update, having Eric and Victor as part of this team helps us understand where the market is today, where the market is going in the next few years, and helps us develop a better code. And I would say the integration with economic development and planning, this is great. This allows us to anticipate, this allows us to better plan for the future of our city and not just react to what's coming in the door. We're already seeing results three months in. This team is tremendous.
Thank you.
Nothing further.
I have to kind of echo what John was saying about the difference. I've only been on this committee since '19, and in the last year, the complete turnover of staff pretty much, and to see this not just attraction, momentum is really exciting for our city, so thank you.
Can I add something? As far as the rest of the calendar year, I can't believe we're in December, first of all, but we don't have any items. We're canceling the meeting, the second meeting of the month for December. July 1st, excuse me, January 1st is a holiday, so we won't have opportunity to schedule a meeting again until mid-January. So with that being said, I did want to wish the ARC a happy holiday.
Thank you.
Thanks.
No party?
Did you get an email?
Didn't get an email yet. Either that or it went to junk.
I got it.
It went to junk. I guess we got to look for it. Who would it come from? City clerk?
Artie Vets Committee Office.
Events, okay. I will have to.
I didn't see that either.
It probably went to junk.
I didn't get it. I was just joking to make them.
You snarky thing. Are there any comments from the committee?
I just, I'm pretty fired up by that economic development speech. I think it's a good way to repaint and kind of keep painting what people think of Cathedral City in general. So yeah, just don't get burnt out, just keep it running, man. I think there's a lot of work to do, but as my dad used to say, it's the dog of the desert, and I don't feel like that anymore. There's a lot of good stuff going on, so.
Oh, you mean Cat City?
Yeah.
Yeah. Cool.
No updates on them all, anything?
What?
They work every day.
Yeah, they're there.
And they're pushing around dirt every day.
You mean across the street?
Yeah.
Starbucks has submitted the tenant improvement building permit. I can share that, but outside of that, we still don't have a solid ETA.
No update, like when they'll take down, they've got the curb now, which is good.
I don't have a firm update on that, but we can share that Starbucks has submitted the TI, so that is a positive step.
The Chipotle sign is up.
That's the only one. I was going to ask about activity over there because I only see one sign, and it looks like really.
And the trash enclosures are looking good.
The trash enclosures, and I think the gas station is.
I don't understand the sequence of things. How's this working?
It's up to the retail, isn't it?
The developer has a schedule. They have had delays, they have had some issues. They are well behind schedule.
They still pushed heavily behind schedule by Edison?
In part, yes, and other factors. I would say that what we shared before about prospective openings, January, February, that's probably the most optimistic timeline that we have now. And as we get more information, as we are aware of more solid dates and we're starting to pencil in, you know, ribbon cuttings and openings, we'll be sure to communicate that with the ARC and Planning Commission.
As long as it gets finished, a year will fly by. It's not a big deal.
Yeah, unlike the apartment buildings.
Yeah.
Is there any, I know that we had opened up for the Festival Lawn. I know that went through the city council, and they approved it for bidding, or I forgot what it is.
So that went through the surplus land act process, and there's no further updates on that.
Okay. Any other comments from us? Okay. This meeting is adjourned at 5:08?
Thank you.